Good evening, I'm Eddie Boyd, resident of Wycomico County, living District One. I'm here to discuss the school funding as well. And first of all, I'm disappointed that you've constructed a situation where you're pitting funding the schools at the 1.3 million against county employees. I mean, that seems to me to be tension that was unnecessarily created. It shouldn't be, you know, better paid for employees of the county and less money for the school system. That scenario should not have been done. It should have been avoided at all costs. But I wanted to share with you the report from the State Board of Education with regards to Wycomico County schools. And I'm hopeful that you've already seen this report card for 2021, 2022, which is the last year for which the report card's available. For academic achievement for elementary schools needs improvement. Academic achievement, and by the way, out of a possible 20 points, Wycomico County has 8.4 points at the elementary school level. Academic achievements for the middle school needs improvement. For a possible 20 points, in the middle school, Wycomico County has a 7.1 score. For the high schools needs improvement academic, for the academic achievement. Out of a possible 30 points, Wycomico County has 12.6. And for those numbers, I mean, the disparity between where we are as a county and what's needed to move the county forward in terms of providing a high-quality education for all kids, I just think it's very short-sighted to have not funded the school system at the level that had been requested by the county executive. And I'm just disappointed that the amendment passed tonight without any further input from the county. So here we are discussing a mood issue because you've already made a decision.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Hello again, Sarah Starr, I live in Fruitland. And I wasn't going to talk about this at all, but I think it's important to say. I homeschool all four of my children. I was a former school teacher. I worked in the private sector. I work with children all the time. And I'm just here to kind of give you a different perspective because we've got all the stats, we've heard all the things, you've got teachers and everybody. But I homeschool, and there's a reason. And the reason is because I live in Fruitland. And nobody wants to send their kids to any of the schools that are in our district. No one. No one wants to send their kids to Bennett. I just went to Bennett's high school graduation, and the majority of the kids that were there were ashamed that they even graduated from Wycomico County schools. I just want to kind of put you in the idea of the kids that we're sending through our system aren't happy to be there. And the parents aren't happy to send them there. And I have friends that live in Chrisfield that have an address in Mardele so that they can drive their child from Chrisfield to go to the Mardele School so that they can make that trip. Because everyone knows that the Mardele School System is the best one. You want to get your kid into that school system. So if we have parents that are willing to rearrange their whole life around trying to drive that far away to get to just that single school system, maybe it's time to rethink where we're putting our funding so that we can make our kids proud to go through Wycomico County, so that we can make our kids proud to be a part of Wycomico County, so that one day they can sit here and say, yeah, I went through the school system and they changed it for me. That's all.
Ms. Starr?
Hello, my name is Lauren Hill. I live in District One. And I'm here in support of our public schools. And I am completely heartbroken by the members of the council who voted no on this bill. Particularly in District One, our students need your help. This is a fundamental crisis for our children. I have one daughter, she currently goes to Salisbury Middle School. She went to Chipman, she went to West Salisbury. The one saving grace for my daughter at these schools was the kindness of the teachers. And thank goodness those teachers are so kind because their legislators are not taking care of them. I'm heartbroken, I'm devastated for the children in my own neighborhood who suffer academically, physically, all of the things. All of these things are resources that the public school system can and should provide for our children. Consistently, time and time again, as a professor at the university, and my husband also, we are fortunate enough to be able to send our daughter to private school. However, we believe in the public school system, but you're making it more and more difficult for us, for all of those who have the ability to send their children to private schools. Every time you say no to one child, it lasts forever. And so I don't know what the future will bring to our budget. I do think it's important to pay attention when every person talks about the future of the budget and to give good eye contact for the future. The one thing I know for sure is that the future is better when you invest in our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Good evening. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am a resident of Wycomico County and president of our Wycomico County NAACP. And I just, I like to jot notes and just want to write a couple of things down. I'm writing, even though we know that this has passed, this budget has been approved, which I too am not in agreement with. This is what I've written. Diminished funding is not only a county problem, but it's a national problem. Since the '70s, advocates across the country have filed dozens of lawsuits and different things to advocate for proper funding of schools. Oftentimes, high-poverty districts receive extremely low per pupil funding. I'm not saying that Wycomico County is a low-poverty district, however, we have 67% of our students in poverty. There is a direct correlation between dollars and equity. Funding is a central component to providing a high-quality education and often leads to better outcomes. We talked about this 83% of our graduation rate. And a 2016 study found that between 1990 and 2011, states that reformed school finances policy, finance policies in order to allocate more funding to high-poverty areas in school districts narrowed thus the learning gap. But allocating equal funding for every student does not necessarily guarantee a positive outcome. However, it does help. True educational equity will require additional resources, not the same old same old. In order to meet the needs of at-risk students, we need to do more. We need to also make accountability for the funds that are given. So I ask, where are our priorities? The expression "put your money where your mouth is" is appropriate. Our children are in crisis, everybody knows it, except it seems that you don't know it. Our children are not expendable, and they need our help. I personally, and this is not for me to toot my own horn, but I have personally made a decision to go and substitute in Wycomico County Public Schools so I can be a part of the solution and so that I can see things firsthand. We, as an organization and other organizations, want to partner alongside of with our schools to help provide resources, but we can't do it alone, right? We need funding, but we need it to be allocated properly as well. So I just need, we're building the Ross Building, we got all these big buildings, we're bringing all these people in. Title Health is every doggone where. Every corner you turn around, this hospital's taking over the whole doggone town. We are giving away land for free to certain individuals. We're doing all these things to say, hey, guys, don't you want to come here? But who wants to come here and put their kids in the schools when we don't believe that we're going to invest properly into those students? Then you want to criticize people for putting their kids in private school, which you shouldn't do. People can make their own decisions for whatever they want to do with their own things. But if our tax dollars are helping to fund this, then we should have a say in where the money goes. And I don't get why you don't get that. I just don't get it.
Thank you, President Brooks.
Good evening, County Council members. My name is Leonard Harvey, I'm a Wycomico County resident, District Three. Both my children go to public schools. I want to reemphasize the fact that even though this has passed, I want you to think for the future. What you've done is very myopic. You're basically committing suicide of the future because intellectual capital investment is something that'll pay off in the future. So if we aren't investing in our children, I don't think we have a future. And we've seen the trend, I mean, we have so many people talking about data. There's a data correlation of the per pupil funding and the outcomes. And we've seen a consistent decline over the last 15 years. And anecdotally, I can say that a lot of the faculty who actually come to teach at SCU, the new faculty, choose not to live in Wycomico County. They either go to Berlin or Ocean Pines or to Eastern. So basically, we are losing future taxpayers in this county. How are we supposed to attract, you know, well-paying jobs and retain them and send the schools, children to school here if we are not funding for the schools? It's going to affect every single businessman here. Anybody wants to invest, where do they want to live? We should make it attractive for them to actually live here so that the children go to school here. Please consider this, at least in the next budget. We don't need the maintenance, I mean, that's the base minimum you got to do, right? No, we got to think a lot higher than that. 23rd out of 24 counties in the state of Maryland, that's the funding status? That's shameful. Think about your grandchildren, maybe your great-grandchildren. It's not, I mean, you know, my kids, my kids will actually graduate in four years from the system, but it's about the next generation. Please invest. Please search through your souls and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Council. Darren Lombardo, Wycomico County. I just wanted to come here tonight, there's a lot of things going on with the budget and everything and what you voted on tonight. I just want to say a couple of things. Our schools, money doesn't fix everything. It sometimes makes things worse. In this case, it's making things worse. I believe in funding our schools properly, I absolutely do, but you have to be a good steward of what you have to begin with. And I can say, the behavior with the funding that has been given to the school system has been reckless. They've defrauded special education, they're using obscene materials in our schools, they're teaching lawlessness, social uprising, victimhood, all sorts of things on the dime. Now, I would like to see accountability, that's the issue here, holding the school system accountable. You are the gateway to the funds. You could say, unless we remove those types of materials from our schools, we're not going to give you a dime, remove it. Because I've sent each and every one of you information on what is in our schools. It is absolutely a disgrace. These are in our classrooms. And so what do we want from our society? We want a rate of return. We want them to be productive members of society. We don't have any sort of performance incentives as a result of the money that's dished out. We need to make sure that they perform. And what is this obscene materials? I've only received two responses from council members on the obscenity in our schools. No one's speaking up against it. But I just want to say, the extra funding, the extra funding, every year I have demonstrated that that is misappropriated. And so not using it on top of SROs, for the exception of SROs, they should not receive a dime, okay? Now, when they prove that they're good stewards, absolutely, open the floodgates, but they need to perform. So everyone here, if you fail, fail to uphold accountability to our board and the materials that are in our school system, you are aiding and abetting in the sexualization of our children. And I want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo.
George Demko, Wycomico County resident. I wasn't going to speak, but Mr. Lombardo got me so upset with his talk about sexualization and obscenity. You know, what's obscene to him might be essential to some of our students. So just because he considers something obscene, you have to consider that some of our kids need that material. Not all of our kids have the same needs. Don't take his word for something being obscene. We have kids who have needs that maybe I don't understand and he doesn't understand. But don't just dismiss these needs without considering carefully what you're doing. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Demko.
Teresa Lombardo, Wycomico County. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but somebody who just spoke caused me to say something. Obscene materials in our school. It's not about homosexuality sex, it's not about straight sex, it's what is there. There are books in the schools with pictures and depictions of how you're supposed to insert your penis into another person. There's pictures. Do our students need to know that? Or should they be learning how to read, write, do math, know science, history? Are they learning any of that? Stats show they're not. But they're learning about how to have sex and how to have unprotected sex. That is what they're learning. That is the obscene material. Our students are failing because our students are not being taught properly. They're not being controlled in the classroom. Ms. Shainy Shields, you had said that, they are not being controlled. Teachers are not allowed to have control because of our teachers' unions. They don't want the teachers to be teaching our students how to read and write. They want to keep everybody down low so they can be controlled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardo.
Oh my goodness. Okay, my name is Stephen Afros, I live on East Isabella Street. I really can't speak specifically to the issues in Wycomico County because I'm relatively new here. But what I'm not new to is teaching. I taught for 26 years in the public school systems in New Jersey. And the first thing I wanted to say about that is when the school, failure or not, has a perception of failing, it becomes the reality. When teachers begin to see, young teachers, begin to see cuts that suddenly, we're not going to offer Italian this year. We let go the teacher who counsels people on drug addiction, addiction. We let go the suicide camp. When teachers, young teachers, see these cuts coming, they start typing up their resumes, printing up their resumes, I show my age, and they go elsewhere. And it sends a message to young teachers, am I going to apply to a school system that is losing funding? Not once or twice, but every year, every year. What's going to happen? That's not where I want to put my future. A weird thing about teaching is tenure and collective bargaining. I was unhappy where I was teaching. I did not like the policies that were being imposed. But I was there for 12 years. No new school system would hire me because my salary would be so high, they would rather have a novice than an experienced teacher. So what you have are experienced teachers, older teachers disillusioned, seeing what's going on, seeing, every time there's a new principal changing the policies, and we're saying, wait, we tried that eight years ago and it didn't work. And younger teachers saying, this is not where I want to be. Now, this is what I want to warn people. When you make a cut, fine, there's a cut this year, we have difficult times, guess what? If you want to restore it, it's an increase. We're not going to have an increase, we can't afford an increase. So this is, this is defunding education on the installment plan. It's very depressing when you see that a school system accepts this cut, accepts this cut, accepts this cut, and suddenly it's bare bottom, it's, there's not much left. Now, I see they want to cut certain positions. I think the question right now and the obscenity is, why aren't we doing more for education instead of less? We wouldn't accept a country that's 17th in military spending, but we'll accept one that's 17th in education? That's absurd. The thing that Thomas Jefferson taught us was the only way you're going to get educated and enlightened elected officials is if you get educated and enlightened voters. And that's our job here. And when teachers don't want to go to the system, when parents don't want to send their children there, when you see cuts and cuts and cuts, and when someone is so radical as to say, let's do what we did five years ago, oh my God, that's radical, we can't do that. So I can't speak specifically about our school system here, but more generically, it's that cuts become the new reality. It's the old mathematical game that if you cut someone's salary by 20%, a year later you give them a 20% increase, it's not the same. It's lower. And we should be aware of that. That's all I need to say.
Any other public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Joan Smith, President of the Wycomico County Education Association. WCEA understands the need to craft a budget that will include funding to recruit and retain the strongest employees. Employees who are highly qualified to carry out the work of the various professions that hold our county together. I learned quite a lot as I listened to your discussion on May 24th and took a lot of notes. And I had to sit here and scribble them out because I only got two minutes worth from that two hours of conversation that you had. So I can only say this. I heard consideration for policemen and firemen. I support policemen and firemen. I think they're essential to our community. But this is what I heard. Council supports firemen 1,000%. We don't want them to think that we're cutting them, it was said. And I want to talk to the Chiefs Association to make sure that they understand what we are doing, make sure that's what they want. I did not hear the same applause or consideration for the children of Wycomico County. I did not hear council supports Wycomico County Public Schools 1,000%. We don't want them to think that we're cutting them. Or I want to talk with the association to make sure that they understand that we're not doing what they don't want. WCEA understands the need for salaries and benefits to recruit and retain a high-quality, full workforce. But let's not pull from the opportunities afforded children of this community by focusing on ways to slice and dice education. Wycomico County Public Schools are second from the bottom in Maryland in funding for our students. We should be racing to the top.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments. Joe?
More reference to the budget about the schools. John, you mentioned that, I'll call you out this time. You mentioned a while ago that we'd only gone over maintenance effort, was it one time or twice, something like that?
Yes, twice at the most.
Yeah. And I remember the last time we went over maintenance effort, the first action I heard from the school board is they went and hired a new public information officer for $90,000. They'd already had one, they needed, they said they needed another one. So there was, there was their first action. Now, when the school board came in, just talked to us this year, we talked about, I don't have a number up there, do I? You didn't put me on time.
No.
Anyway, we were talking about the SROs, and I made the comment or asked a question. I said, how about the sheriffs having trouble hiring deputies? It's very important that we have this money for the SROs, I understand that. And he said, I asked, I said, how about the sheriff can't hire these deputies? Well, we can spend the money somewhere. So, you know, that's, that's kind of, when you're trying to help and do something and then you get answers like that. Now, I want to give an example. I have a friend of mine whose wife was a teacher in Worcester County. Wycomico lured her away with more money. She came to Wycomico to work. And a few months later, she left and went back to Worcester County for less money. And I asked her why. She said, I got no support from the administration. She said, you'd send kids to the office, they'd send them back, you couldn't deal with them. She said, we didn't have that problem in Worcester County. They lost a good teacher, a good teacher that had been teaching for like 20 years. They lost a good teacher because they could not get support. And I hear both sides. Fortunately, I'm very involved in the community. I hear from folks that come up here, and you complain about us not giving money to the board. Also hear from employees at the board, teachers at the board. Teachers come to me and say, look, do you know what's going on in our schools? Do you know why they're spending, why they need more money? Do you know what they're spending more money on? You know, it's constant, it's not one time. You know, I've had a lady I talked to one day, she said, you know, I left the public school system and went to teaching at a private school. I lost 30% of my pay because I can teach at this school. I can teach. All I do is babysit in the public school because I get no support from the administration. So anyway, we give them $800,000 over, and I'm sure if it was $1,800,000, it wouldn't be enough. And we have schools on the east side in Mardele, people are fighting to get their kids in those schools because there's discipline in those schools. Those schools get the same amount of money per pupil than the schools, other schools in the county, I suppose. But it's all about how you manage it. So one other thing I want to mention is, I didn't bring up during our budget talks about the fire service agreement. And I would really like that explained to me. We put $1 million in the fire service agreement, correct? But they're telling me, the city says we're getting 1.9 million. They're expecting to get 1.9. And they say, we're in arrears from 2022. Maybe Bunky can explain this. I don't know whether we want to get into this right now or not. But it's, you know, we got $1 million in there, they're thinking they're going to give 1.9.
Yeah, they're not getting 1.9.
If that's okay, John. Is that okay? We're not supposed to get into the debate.
Go ahead, if you... They're not getting 1.9 million. That was their ask for next year because we've already started, we had Andy Kitrow in the office today, and I specifically told him, we're doing a one-year agreement here, let's not talk about what's going to happen in next year's agreement. Though we want to, and we've already started negotiating, I was like, this is a one-year deal with $1 million. And if I remember right, the number, the formula yielded about, I want to say it was $920,000, does that sound right, Laura? Something like that. And then there was, there was an additional amount we gave them for capital expenses because, you know, the price of everything has gone up, you know, fire engines, ambulances, that kind of thing. And it was based on a model that the acting executive, John Posoda, had negotiated with David Fitzgerald and the city under their previous administration. But we cut that a little bit because Posoda had $120,000. And so we kept it a little under a million. And that's, that's what we came to you with, and it looks like you kept it in the budget, and that's their clear understanding. They are going to ask for 1.9 million next year. So that doesn't mean we're going to give it to them. They are going to ask for 1.9 million next year. So that doesn't mean we're going to give it to them because we haven't negotiated that yet.
We're giving them a million this year, but what about the, the money that's owed from 2022? Are they going to get that?
This, so how it works is all the calls from the previous calendar year. So every call through December 31st are tabulated, and Mr. Atkins kind of, kind of talked about this where the city says, these are the number of calls, then the county, we have county people that verify, and they sort of do their own negotiation. They come up with a number of calls. And then what the fire service agreement is, is we negotiate a per-call rate for the different types of calls, and then that formula yields a number. So the one point, the $1 million is paying them for what is last calendar year, which wrapped up December 31st. So I, I don't know what they're talking about with, we, I believe we've already given them the check. Now, one of the confusions could be, so obviously those, those calls finish December 31st. We didn't put the number until this budget because we don't know what that number is going to be. So we can't budget it until, we won't have that money available till July. So yes, we pay them after the year, after the calendar year. So I think that's where there's a confusion because it's in arrears, because it has to be, because we can't, and we're not going to pay them based on our projection. I would be totally against that.
Right.
So I think that's where the confusion is, is that we pay them in arrears, and we can't budget it until we know the number. So I hope that's clear as mud.
We'll see.
Chaney?
I just wanted to say that it took a lot for me to vote for the budget because I wasn't particularly in the cutting of the budget. As Mr. Atkins said, and I told the council members, that the length of service award program, I said, sometimes it's best to have something, don't need it, than need it and don't have it. The $400,000 that was reduced for the volunteer fire, which was earmarked for that. And I wouldn't agree with that. I do agree with Josh about the money for students. However, I think that we have to look at the control of the students. We're losing control of our kids in the school system. Like someone said, volunteer in the school system. I hear stories of what goes on in the school system. So personally, how can you teach children when you have 10 or 15 disruptive kids? They have fights in the classroom. They strike teachers. The teachers can't hit them back. If they hit them back, they lose their job and lose maybe their teaching certificate. It's a difficult time here. The kids are not made accountable for what they do, and we want to put more money in teaching. I think we need to have the mental health for kids. We need to go and talk to the parents. We need to have the parents volunteer in the schools so they see what their children are doing, and the very children may be acting up. They'd be the ones you don't think would act up, might be brought up, right? But today's education is, is very hard. It's very hard. And I think protecting your children from other things, if we don't teach them, they're going to learn it from their peers. We talk about what's in the books and everything. They're going to learn it from their friends. They're going to see it on movies. They're going to see it on Facebook, TikTok, all that stuff. So they're going to learn some stuff that we don't, might not want them to learn. They're learning early. But I think I voted for the budget because I believe that we have employees that may not have gotten a raise for years, and we talk about inflation. They have families too. And I do appreciate that the council found where we could give them 6% of the, of, instead of 3% because 3% really is nothing. So I'm sorry that we had to cut the budget for the school board, but I promise you that next year, I advocate for the, keep the, get more money for the students. But also, I want to advocate that we need to lobby for more control and for the teachers to have more control and discipline factor in the classroom. And that's the only way they're going to learn if the teachers have control in their classroom.
Ask him shields. Jeff?
I had a great experience working with all of the department heads on the budget. I'm no stranger to budgets. It's the first one I've dealt with of this size, but everybody worked together. Everybody knew times are tight. They're probably going to get tighter. It's not what we want. Is the budget perfect? Probably not, but we have to work with what we have to work with, and tough decisions have to be made. I believe the fire chiefs told us that LoSAP program is not ready to be, not ready for prime time yet. That's why they told us that we could use that money. So before we get blasted for defunding the fire department. We, we put a lot of hours in, in this together, and I'm, I voted for the budget because I thought it was the right thing to do. Again, it's not perfect, but we don't live in a perfect world. We live in a tough world. We have to make tough decisions every day and proud to work with everybody up here.
Yeah, I, I voted for the budget because, I mean, yeah, Jeff, we did work really hard on it. And yes, we have talked to the fire chiefs, and they weren't using it. I would have liked to have gone back to the fire departments, but we, we, we needed to get more money somehow for these raises, and this was a way to do it. Yeah, I would, you know, I would fund the school system more if, if the code of conduct was handled, handled differently. I hear from teachers and students, and, you know, I didn't graduate that long ago. It's been 10 years, and I'm still friends with, you know, parents that have kids, and they're in school right now, and it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a good time in, in schools, but that, that partly has to go with the policies that are made, and I would like to see those policies turn and get more strict. That way, we feel more comfortable in giving to our schools. And I, I just, I just want to leave on that note that, that I am, I am happy with this budget, and this is, you know, the best we could do. We, we had to, we had to cut from the budget. We can't add to the budget. And we could only request that this go to the six, this, this money go to raises, and thankfully, the executive allowed it to happen. And, you know, that's, that's about it.
Comments?
Under presidential comments, I would only say that I can appreciate what everyone has said. I, I get it. Schools are, one of them are most important assets in Wycomico County, and the children, they certainly are our future. I've always felt that way. As, as a little bit of perspective here, as long as I've been on the council, and Joe can, can attest to this as well, the council has, for the most part, given maintenance of effort to the school systems. It's a standard that the state sets. It is, and, and that's kind of like what we've gone by. We've tried to be very careful because the thing with maintenance of effort, this is what we were worried about. When you contribute to the maintenance of effort, that's included in the formula for the next year, and the next year, and the next year. So exponentially, it can increase. So we have some concerns over whether or not it's fiscally responsible to try to do that because it is a recurring cost, and it automatically becomes an escalating cost. So again, the council has been very, very careful in how we deal with maintenance of effort in the school systems. Personally, I thought, well, this is really great. We're giving $800,000, almost $1 million, over maintenance of effort. It's unheard of. What I find is somewhat surprising is that, and I get it, I understand your comments, and I appreciate that, and I recognize the fact that, that the schools are important, so are the children. But it just surprised me that tonight, we had more, we had more comments tonight in giving $800,000 above maintenance of effort than we've had in the last six years at maintenance of effort. So I only say that not to challenge anyone, but to let you know from my perspective, I felt that we were doing a good thing for the school system with this, with this $800,000 increase. And I think also, I don't, I wouldn't want to overlook the fact that this council has also contributed within my, my tenure and Joe's. We had Bennett High School, a new Bennett High School, a new Bennett Junior High School, a new West Salisbury. We have a new Beaver Run that we just did a ribbon cutting on, and Maradona. We're right in the middle of Maradona right now, and there's more to come. So.
Salisbury renovation.
Excuse me?
North Salisbury renovation.
And North Salisbury renovation. So.
Prince Street renovation.
I'm just trying to let you know that, that I, I don't really perceive this council as being negative towards education. I do think that we feel it is a high priority in Wycomico County. I get it, you know, there could always be more. At this particular time, I thought $800,000 above maintenance of effort sent a very good message to the Board of Education. We can always rethink it in the, in the years to come and try to define how, how we're going to do more, if we even get that option. With the, with the current commission and the blueprint from Maryland, I think the numbers are going to escalate much more, not objecting to that at all. But I think we're going to see increases in, you know, a million, two million, depending on when they finally decide what their formula is. So again, I just thought it was important to, to remind people here that the council is not against education at all from my perspective. We feel that we've done a very good job, and we're trying to do the best we can on a continuing basis. So I will leave it at that. I would also like to say, we accomplished, I think, a very extraordinary measure tonight in, in working towards the commitment to law enforcement tonight, which is, which is very important. And I would like again to thank the Fraternal Order of Police for their work with the county council, and Sheriff Mike Lewis for helping us with those measures we had to take, very much needed. It was very contentious at times, but I would like to say that the council did an excellent job, I think, in trying to negotiate what was best for, for the deputies. And I'm glad we finally brought that to fruition tonight. That being said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Take the bar.
Means adjourn. We'll take a five-minute recess if you don't mind. Thank you very much. We're reconvenienced Wycomico County Council, Legislative Session 2023-11 for June 6, 2023. First topic on the open work session agenda is a discussion with Chop Tank Electric Cooperative on broadband. Thank you. I appreciate you all taking the time to be here. Sorry to hold you up, but I think you've been in enough meetings to be, to know you're subject to delays when it comes to public.
We understand.
Meetings. If you could do us a favor, to my left across, state your name and your title for the public. Thank you.
Tim McGahey. I'm the Vice President of Technical Services.
Valerie Conley, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Relations.
Lee Bryce-Forduke, Vice President of Engineering.
Matt Defoe, Manager of Government Affairs.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. We do understand that as, as, as this most recent tranche of funding, funding has come out for broadband, especially in Wycomico County, that you were awarded that. So congratulations. We're really here to sort of to enlighten the public as to where we're, where we're going to go from here, the amount that was funded, how many homes you think that might reach, what areas you may be looking to, to reach out to, and just the basics.
Sure. And we had a couple of slides here. I'm not going to read everything I was going to read about the slides. I just wanted, again, Valerie Conley, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Relations. We appreciate you taking the time and letting us come in and give you a little update on what we're doing on broadband. This slide really is just kind of to remind people that we are first and foremost an electric company. We're an electric co-op. We're owned by our members, and that is what we've spent the last more than 100 years doing and doing well in the nine counties on Maryland's eastern shore. Some of the stats on this page just show the number of miles of electric line we have and our reliability ratings, and really the good work that we do on behalf of the cooperative members. So in 2019 and 2020, we started to hear more and more from our members about the fact that they didn't have good broadband service, and nobody was willing to come out to their homes in the rural area and provide that service. And so we went to the General Assembly, and we passed one bill in 2019 to allow us to use some of our electric easements to provide broadband service. In 2020, we went back and we became deregulated from the Maryland Public Service Commission so that we could establish the wholly-owned subsidiary of Chop Tank Fiber and be able to use the economies of scale that are needed in rural areas, poles, linemen, our engineers, our, our technical services folks, be able to use all of those people that the co-op already employs on behalf of our members, but to put that to work towards broadband. And so we passed that bill in 2020, and later that August, right in the middle of COVID and everything else, our members unanimously passed the change in our bylaws and passed the vote to become member-regulated instead of Public Service Commission regulated. And we formed Chop Tank Fiber in September of 2020 and made our first connections in April of 2021. So we had a ribbon cutting up near Denton where we made our first connection that year. We are currently, we've currently passed, well, we have on the slide, 3,500 homes on the eastern shore, but we're probably closer to 5,000. This was a stat from the end of 2022. We have been seeking grant opportunities wherever they exist, and for the most part, those grant opportunities are coming out of the Office of Statewide Broadband, and it's pass-through money coming from the federal government through the infrastructure bill or the ARPA allocations that came out over the last several years. So in, in Wycomico County specifically, if you can see on the slide, there's a kind of a purple area and a light blue area bigger than the big aqua section. And those are the demonstration projects that we invested in and built out in 2021. And we were able to provide broadband service to 150 locations in the plantations and Webster Estate communities along Old Railroad, Porter Mill, and Deerfield Roads. So then we went back and applied for a much larger grant for FY23, which we just received from the state. And this is going to allow us to provide broadband service to another 1,276 locations. One of the primary requirements for applying for the grant was that it had to be for locations that were unserved by any other provider. And so we've been trying very carefully to draw maps and identify unserved areas so that we can put those in the applications. And keeping in mind that the reason that the grants are so important to us is, again, it's very expensive to do this in rural areas, and the, the grant money, whether it's coming from the federal, state, or local government, because we have partnered in other counties with local government on some of this, allows us to keep contractors and keep them working and going from one job to the next. It makes progress much faster for us. So the grant that we are currently working on will allow us to cover all those aqua areas on the map. And I acknowledge that this map can't quite be big enough for everybody to see every location. We are putting it up on our, at choptankfiber.com so that members of the community will be able to input their address and know whether or not it is currently available for service or is in one of the areas that we are building out. We expect that the aqua areas will be in service for the most part by the end of 2024.
So the aqua is the very, the large conglomerate of properties.
Yeah. So it wraps around the west side. There's a little bit on the southern border, and then just a few areas over which are kind of close to where the Chop Tank Salisbury headquarters office is.
Near Warwick.
Near Warwick, called. Near Warwick, yes.
So engineering's underway. Leroy is our Vice President of Engineering, and he can answer maybe any questions that are going on, on that front. And, and Tim is working with our technical services team to really roll this program out. But our first step always is engineering, so we're going out and looking at the area, determining how many poles we have to replace, because often when we put fiber up there, the poles need to be replaced because it's an additional weight that we're putting on there. And then we have to figure out how many miles we're, we have to do underground and overground, and really just make a plan for how we get from our substation where we might be locating our key equipment and build out. And as you know, the, the demo project started over there in the Hebron area, and so that would probably be the first line of defense as we start to build out. But until the engineering team gets done figuring out how all that comes together, we won't be 100% sure of the next step. I believe that was most of, I think, the rest of my slides. Oh. The next question, after everyone wants to know when it's coming, is how much is it going to cost? And so this is on our website as well, but we're offering service of 100 megabits per second, download and upload speed. Everything we offer is symmetrical. Some of you probably know, but the federal government up until very recently said if you had 25 megabits download and three megabits upload, you were considered to have high-speed internet. We all know that that wasn't enough, that we discovered all that during everyone learning from home and trying. we discovered all that during everyone learning from home and trying to interact from home and work from home over the last several years. So our lowest speed package is 100 megabits per second. And we're offering that for 84.95 a month. Then we have a 450-megabit package, a 1-gigabit and a 2.5-gigabit service package available to residential customers. We also provide service to commercial customers, but we price that based on each individual's businesses, their need and, and how they want us to set it up on their, for their business. I also just want to mention too, because I think a lot of folks who are watching may be interested, but we are an approved affordable connectivity provider through the Federal Communications Commission. So there is federal assistance available for people who qualify. And they're, were approved at the state level and Chop Tank itself is offering some additional assistance to customers who qualify.
And these, these individuals, I guess the question, first of all, it's funny. I looked at the 100 megabytes and the 84.95, I thought, oh, that's a pretty decent price, right? I thought, please don't tell me that I need 2,500 megabytes in order to watch what I normally do. But it's very surprising that if you really want to do streaming and movies or Netflix or whatever you want to do, it's really low. It's from what I saw, it's like 10 to 20 megabytes maybe.
Depending on the quality. Now, obviously when we start getting into 4K and people really want to start subscribing to 4K packages and get that full stream or virtual reality stuff, that's when you're really going to get into the higher packages. 100 meg, up and down, fiber optic quality, internet is going to service. And that's what we tell people. You know, start off on 100 meg because quite honestly, particularly the areas that we're building in, I mean, they're working off of really high latency, which is relatively slow internet packages of satellite or what have you. There, it's going to be, just 100 meg package alone is going to be a big jump in what they're actually having currently. So it is going to serve most people, but we are, we have set up our network and staged our network so that we're essentially building and, and what we're trying to tell people, we're building tomorrow's network today and all of the technology that we're putting in so that the dollars that are being spent currently are actually going to be lasting for decades, not just a few years, which is what I think we've seen a lot in the past, particularly in the rural community of, okay, this will stop the bleeding and get you along another year or two. But then we keep investing money again and again, every few years at a time to try to solve this problem. Well, this is a, this is a one-time fix to this problem, the type of technology that we're putting in place.
Good.
And then the one other item I just wanted to mention is that we are also providing free of charge to our customers, a suite of protective services. Command IQ is an app on the phone so that you can control what's happening on your Wi-Fi network. Experience IQ allows you to set limits for children or grandchildren in the house to where they go or the time they can spend on certain sites. And Protect IQ is just a network level protection system so that anything connected to your network is protected from any kind of bug or, or intervention from the outside. So we like to say if it's connected, it's protected. And then this, this slide, our lawyer makes us put this up, but there is a, a list of charges or fees that could potentially apply depending on circumstances. And this is on our website as well. But we are waiving most of these fees during our grant build-out process. So we're waiving the $150 installation fee. We, we're waiving our long lane fee. That has been a major problem for most consumers who are trying to get broadband in rural areas. And we've kind of built that into the grant process right now. Once we're done building under the grant, if we have to go back and reap somebody, our policy is we're going to charge $1 a foot over if you go beyond 1,000 feet, which is very generous compared to what some of the other ISPs charge and, and the amount they give for free. But this is very similar to what we do on the electric side. So we've kind of patterned it after that. But we're hoping to get to everybody in the grant area and get them connected during the build-out so that that fee would not be charged.
So I live up an 800-foot lane and built the house in 1990. And Comcast wanted, I don't know, $2,000 or $3,000 back in 90 to hook me up. So naturally didn't do that, went with the dish. And for years, they'd send me cards. Now, I'm about three miles from the Comcast office or where Comcast office was there by Shorebirds. They'd send these cards out, we'll give you free hookup. And I called them, okay, come on, hook me up. Oh, well, we can't do that now. So I never have hooked up to Comcast, but it's, you know.
Well, and that's one of the major complaints that we heard from so many of our members.
A lot of long lanes in Wycomico County.
And try and make it reasonable. So the last slide that we had in here was just again, reminding members of the public and, and our members who are in this area, if they would like to log on to the Chop Tank Fiber website, they can input their information. And as soon as we have service available, we notify everybody who has logged into the computer system by email. But then we go back and we send a postcard to every single address in that area. So if folks aren't already on the system, they will get notification from us that broadband is, is about to be available so that they can sign up.
So you're sending postcards to all the unserved or underserved homes?
It's going to be everybody in that polygon on that slide a few back as we, so, so what we'll do is, as part of the engineering process, they're going to break that into zones. So that could be, Leroy, could that be like 25 different zones?
Typically, our zones are going to run, you know, 50 to 100.
People or locations.
Passings. Locations. Addresses. So we'll divide those in and then we'll start chipping away at that. So, you know, when we're looking at being available by the end of 2024, that whole zone is not going to be held till that. As soon as it's ready to be hooked up, we're going to be turning that on, notifying those people in that zone that it's eligible.
Connecting about 40 residents per week. And that's people who have chosen or who, who have made the decision to subscribe to our service. We are making it available to far more than that number, but we're getting about 40 a week that we're sending crews in to just install the equipment and get them hooked up to service.
Do you have to be with Chop Tank Electric in order to be on the broadband?
You do not.
Okay, that's good. Question I might, I guess I might have, I don't know if it's can be this simplistic or not, but Jeff or Shaney, they're going to get questions. They're going to have tomorrow, where someone's going to say, look, I live right here. What's, what's my timeline? When's my date? When am I going to have it? What, what will the council members be able to say to these people who live on a particular road on the west side of the county?
So definitely, well, definitely, pretty much almost, almost everybody in that area will be connected by the end of 2024. That will be the, that's the date we're aiming to get everybody connected in this grant. It's going to be a couple more months before we know for sure what our building pattern is going to be to even be able to estimate internally who's going to be first and second, you know, again, based on that whole pre-engineering study that they're doing.
There are engineers going around in the, in the west of Mardele Springs. You'll see trucks out there putting in flags and, you know, that's, that's a good, that's a good first sign. But until we have that, that portion of it done, portion of it will move really fast.
Feel free to, if, I'll leave my email address. I think you guys have it here, but feel free to shoot me an email if there's a particular problematic person that needs an exact answer. Shoot me that and I will get you some, the best information we can back to you.
Can, can you walk us through the process? I actually had somebody on Porter Mill Road like two weeks ago. They came out and stuck a flag in my yard. What's next?
So the flag is, so first thing they do is they do a high-level design on the computer. They lay out a basic path of where they're trying to place pedestals, how they would connect it. When we design the network, we're designing it so that every house that, that we pass could connect at the same time. We're also designing it with capacity so that as future houses come in, there is capacity there for that. So they lay all of that out to start with and then they send out field engineers. The field engineers go out and visit every single and they walk the whole thing. So you'll see them out there putting in flags and marking spots and drawing it up and, and probably stopping and talking to you about different issues or if they need to put, move a pole or something like that. Once that's done, that is taken back, entered into the computer. It is, goes through a process of reviews at that point. And then it gets stacked in against our crews and where our availability on crews are. And, you know, the underground has to be divided up and sent to the underground crews or to other crews. So mixed in there, we've got material ordering and things like that. But all of it, it, portions of it will go really fast and portions will be very far away. But as we're moving down the road, the closer we're getting to you, that process, you know, we make people happy when we shut down the roads. You know, I mean, that's hard, that's hard to believe, but when people see us doing construction on the side of the road, they're happy.
What about the building permits? Any, any, do you have to pull permits for anything?
For the most part, where we have electric service, we already have a right of way and we have the pole. The question about whether if you're not a Chop Tank Electric customer, can you get broadband? And the answer is yes, but sometimes we have to go out and negotiate, not negotiate, but we have to get the landowner to sign to allow us to put the, either the underground or the over, the overground and, and the pedestals on their property because we don't currently have an agreement with them. We don't pay for that. If we can't get it from somebody, we try and work around it. But for the most part, people without broadband are happy to provide that right of way in order to get service.